We added to our advisory evacuation all the way up to Pine Crest. So now on the south side of 108, all the way up to Pine Crest, they're in the same advisory mode that you folks have been in and been in for the last couple of days. What we wanted to get across is just because that advisory we've been in in a couple of days doesn't mean that it's any less serious. Please prepare to go at moment's notice because we don't know with this fire behavior when that time is going to come or when that trigger point. We have those trigger points set out there. We'll have a little bit of time hopefully, but you need to be ready to get going. Along those same lines, we're asking that if you could please, if there's any way you could not wait to the last minute to pull your RV or trailer or anything down, especially in me, you know how the roads are in there. If we have to go to an evacuation order, we're trying to get a lot of RVs out, we're going to have a problem. So if you could just make that part of your pre-plan package is to maybe move your RV down to a more safer area. Clear up a little confusion. There might be some confusion, but we say don't go to Facebook, Twitter, that to get your information. What we're meaning is if there's a reputable page you're using on there and they're putting out good information, by all means, but don't fall prey to the rumor mill on Facebook and that kind of thing. A lot of unsubstantiated things up there. We can't endorse any page on Facebook or anything like that anymore than we can endorse Fox 40 or Channel 7 or whoever it might be because we have no control of what they're putting out. Anything else we need to cover?
What about the south side? I mean, the north side?
The north side of 108 is not under any restriction at this time. That could change at some point depending on where the fire goes, but at this time it's just the south side. Remember what it was. There was one other area. You're going to learn in some of this pre-fire planning, fire instructs you to leave your house open when you leave, okay? We tell you to lock it. It's just, it's different philosophies. Fire protects your house from fire. We try to keep your house safe from that, okay? The way I think of it is, we may go to, we may at some point go to an evacuation order. Just because we go to an evacuation order doesn't mean your neighborhood is going to catch fire, just like it did in PML. We went to an order, but we were able at that time to stop the fire from approaching in that area there. What we don't want is you to leave your home, the fire never get there, you left your house unlocked and things were stolen. If I lived in a place that was an evacuation order, I would probably lock my door, turn on the exterior lights and believe me, if those firefighters need to get in my house, they've proven that they can get in there. And it's cheaper to buy a door jam at a door, I think, than what might be taken. We'll take some questions at the end, hopefully alleviate any concerns you have. At this time, I'd like to introduce Sheriff Stevens with you.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you Scott. Sorry, I have not been able to be around for the last couple of days, but I know that Scott is very capable and does a great job. I guess maybe now he might be running for sheriff, who knows? But anyways, Scott is not only a great deputy, he's a great supervisor, but more importantly, he's a real good friend, great friend. But as Scott said, we are trying, and when I say trying, we're doing the best that we can to put everything in place so that you, the public, can feel as comfortable and as at ease during this very difficult time. Know that all of us, that our county employees with the sheriff's office share the same concerns, the same worries and all of those things that you have that are sitting here today. So we are doing everything in our power to make sure, working with our partners with the Forest Service, our partners with CDF, all the other county employees, to come up with a plan for specific sections and different things that may, or trigger points I should call them, to where we may have to go to an evacuation advisory, evacuation order and so on. So we have those things in place. We know what they are. One of the questions that people ask is what are they? Well, it just says in the social media, not that it's a bad thing, but sometimes we hear things and we need to substantiate that. There's a thing called radios that fire will talk on back and forth, and there are people out there that have scanners that may hear things and, oh, it hit this ridge and we're bumping along here and the fire is there. Well, it's happened. It has crossed several times into those trigger point areas that we may, that we feel are the trigger points to start evacuating, but fire is able to come in, mop it up, clean it up, and then we're able, you know. So what we don't want to do is impact you so much to where you leave and come back, leave and come back. We want to do it in an orderly fashion and in a fashion that has confidence in those that are making those decisions. So we are, these folks are doing an outstanding job. Not only the folks that are fighting these fires, but your deputies, we have lots of resources, and I think there's over 3,000 firefighters that are here. And we've called up, we should be calling up around 40 or 50 law enforcement now, we may be calling even more. And the reason why is we just want to be prepared. In this area, there's a lot of roads that even the local deputies have a hard time knowing where they're at. And so that's just, that's one of the beautiful things about living here, but in the same sense, you know, we want to be prepared. So you've seen a lot of firefighters in your, embedded in your communities, they've actually, and they, we talked about it this morning, you've opened your homes, you're feeding them, you're having a relationship with them, and that's a good thing. And we want to do the same thing obviously on the law enforcement side, so that you know who they are, that they can help you, and that if that time comes, that we do it in a orderly fashion. I have all the confidence in the world with our firefighters that it won't get to that point. But one of the things that I've learned in life, we come up with a very good plan, especially in sports, you know, you come up with a great game plan, sometimes there's a team that's just a little bit better, and you've just got to be prepared for those types of things. I do want to say one thing about, touch on what Scott said, and that is, if you do have large trailers, large RVs, those types of things, it wouldn't hurt to go ahead and move them down the hill and then by all means come on back. And the only reason why we say that is because we don't want to wait till the last second. And as I was talking to Chief, you know, the folks that are here, you've probably been here 30, 40, 50 years, all your life. And so you know this forest and you know the different things, how it'll burn and those type of things, and that's why you're here. You are the ones that are going to stay through the end, and we understand that, and we want to be as transparent and give you as much information as possible. But again, we want to make sure that if we really have to do that order, that we don't have that traffic jam, that bottleneck and so on. So we're not going to do questions, we just need, I'll turn back over to the chief and go over there.
I want to say one thing, I want to say a lot of things, I want to say lots and lots of things, but I'll hand you to a few. You see different people up here almost every day except, Scott has been consistently here with us since the first day and I appreciate that. One of the reasons you see that is because all of these people up here have a job to do on the fire. They are all assigned to the fire to have a job to do, and sometimes the job they have to do on the fire is more important than coming up here. Much as you might think coming up here is critical, they have other jobs sometimes that are a little bit more critical. So I want to point out that just because you don't see them here doesn't mean that something went wrong, it doesn't mean that things are worse than before, it simply means that the particular task they're assigned to, they've got something more important to do. And then there are other conflicts. Supervisor Evan Royce is not here, and I believe the reason he's not here, I talked to him this morning, I believe the reason he's not here is because he's attending another meeting, I pretend there's a meeting up in Pine Crest or somewhere else in his supervisory district, and he needs to get out and talk to all of his, all of his, where are you guys?
Constituents.
Constituents, that's the word, thank you. All of his constituents, not just those that live here in our community. So, you know, he has to get around them, and so we understand that, you know, he'll be back tomorrow or the day after, and we'll still be here. Even if the fire goes out, we'll still be here, we'll be here for a long time. But there's a couple of other things I want to talk about. Can we put up a map of the fire from yesterday? It's the best thing we have. I did not get a digital map, and we don't have anybody from the incident team here except for the public information officers today. But if we can put up a map from yesterday's fire, I'll talk briefly about what I do know and understand that this comes from, I go to the 6:00 AM incident briefing at the incident base in Twalome every morning. It's different than the EOC briefing, it's in standard at the Emergency Operations Center. The incident briefing is, there's no questions and answers, it's the incident commander gets up and, well, actually the operations section, the operations section chief gets up and he says, "This is what happened," and the guy from last night's plan section gets up and says, "This is what happened last night," and he turns it over to the next man, he says, "Your Division Alpha, and that's your assignment, your Division Bravo, and this is your assignment." And they give out orders, and they talk about the trouble spots that they're going to have. And it's a very quick, short briefing, but everybody gets their assignment, and the divisions break off into separate areas, and they talk to the people that are in their division. The division supervisor break off into separate areas and talk to the people that are assigned to their division about what their assignments are for the day. They go grab lunches and water, they get the firings, and they head for the line. And so it's a very, it's a very orderly fashion for a fire. The incident briefing and the incident base is really a very orderly process, it's surprisingly so, because these people have actually done it before, a lot. Big incidents and small incidents, they go through training and they do it all the time. So at that briefing, there's not a lot of talk about what-if scenarios, and there really is no talk, virtually no talk about the evacuations. That's why I'm glad that Scott's able to come, because they really talk about the firefighting effort and the resources they're putting into that. They don't talk about other things like communities, the needs of the community members. They talk about the threats that are to the communities. But from yesterday and the day before, this, see this piece of line right here? This was yesterday's growth, this was the day before, and this was where it was the day before that. So it hasn't grown much. The problem is, is this real rough line from here to here, it's a real rugged line, and I don't believe they're able to work with bulldozers or fire, so that means hand crews. And it's given them trouble. They've got a good black line up here, they've got a good black line down here, but this section right here is giving them trouble. And so you will, that happens to be Division Charlie or Delta, I'm not sure which. So if you, if you happen to listen to the radio or the scanner near, you'll hear traffic about that? Yeah, like Scott said, you'll hear that traffic, or maybe it was the sheriff, say, "Yeah, you'll hear that traffic. You'll hear them. Yeah, it's slopped over here, yeah, get some resources over here." That, unless you know the perspective that that's in, it isn't going to tell you anything. We knew going into this morning, after the briefing, going into the fire this morning, we knew that that part of the line, which is right here, we knew that was going to give them trouble. And it looks a little more, it's hooched out a little bit right there now, it looks a little more like that. They've got a control line right here, it drops into the river, and what they would like to do is they would like to burn from here back, so they have a nice clean line with wide bulldozers. But every time that you're ready to do that, the wind shifts on them. And the last thing you want to do is start a backfire right here with the southwest wind. When you hear the direction of the wind, a southwest wind means wind that comes from the southwest, okay? A north wind comes from the north, okay? So if they start burning here at 10 o'clock in the morning, and then at 11 o'clock the wind shifts to southwest, it'll start down here and it'll flow that way, and you know what's going to happen to this line. So the conditions have to be just right before they start that firing operation, so they haven't been able to burn that out. What that means is this piece right here just keeps growing a little bit at a time, a little bit at a time, and they're working it, and they're working it, and they're working it, and they're trying to get a line around it, but it's rugged, it's miserable territory. So that's causing them a little bit of a problem. They're working on it, they're focusing on it, because as you can see, if they can close that line, then we've got black all the way from, and this is yesterday's map, by the way, I think I mentioned that. Then they, then we've got black all the way from here down to here. So that one piece of line is critical, they've put a lot of resources on it, they're working it real heavy. They also have some problems up here and up around Duckwall. That's another problem they're having, and you can see all the lines that they put in as contingency lines, as primary control lines. All of these that are hash marked like that are line, is a dozer line that has been completed. It's not a proposed one. A proposed one is this one right here, see the one that's got X's and dots? That's where they want the line to go. Once they finish it, they X it all out like that, turn all those dots into X's, and it's a hash mark. So they all work left, but if something happens, you guys need to know that even though you're under an advisory evacuation, that if something happens, you need to be able to get in the car and go, not take four hours to pack the car up and call the relatives and find somebody to take care of your pet. You need to be in a situation where you can, where you can get in the car and go. The other thing that I want to point out briefly is there's cops from all over California here. Do we have any from out of the state yet?
No.
I said yeah. We have cops from all over California. They're here to the mutual aid system. They're here to request the sheriff, or the mutual aid system, they're working for the sheriff. They have the same authority here as any sheriff or CHP or police officer has. They have the exact same authority. If, if, I'm going to say this, if you commit a crime in their presence, they will arrest you. Just because they're from Modesto, you try and tell them you're not from St. Anaslos or from Toole County or the St. Anaslos Forest, and you can't arrest me. Let me know how that goes. So they have the same authority. They're working, they're working in teams, and most of the teams I've seen is one of your deputies paired with one, two, or three from out of the area. They've been, they were in and out of our firehouse all night last night, getting maps, using the restrooms, eating some food. But the key point there is they were getting the maps, they were asking questions about the streets, they were learning the areas, they were talking to us about things that aren't obvious on the map. And so they're communicating with us not so much at the upper levels, because it's really difficult for all of us to get together at the same time someplace, because he's got, this is just one little fire district here, folks, he's got the entire county to worry about, and there's big problems over in Groveland side. But at the very lowest level, at the firefighter captain level, the fire engine level, and the patrol car level, those guys are talking to each other all day and all night long, and they're communicating and they're working together. So this is, this is a tremendous joint effort. The fire today was, let's see, this morning, now 180,000 acres plus or minus. You can tell, you know, the, trying to figure out exactly how many acres it is when it's got those kind of lines on it is a little bit difficult. Plus or minus 180,000 acres. As of this morning, it was the seventh largest fire in California's history. I know you all want to be part of history, but just not this part of history. Even, even after we closed this little piece off down here, there's a lot of work left to be done. So until they call it contained, even if we close that piece off, maybe I'll take it, maybe I'll take a little, you know, take a breath, take a little bit of a breather, but there's still a lot of work out there to be done. And the fire's going to get bigger. Every day it's going to be a little bit bigger, and a little bit bigger, and a little bit bigger, until they finally do control and contain, contain and control. Containment comes first, control comes last. Let's see, strike team flagging. How many of you know what the flag? If the strike team, five engines are going around and they flag your door, they flag your mailbox, they flag the tree in your front yard, what does that mean? Does that mean that it's a winner or a loser? It does not mean that your house is a winner or a loser. It means the firefighters have been there, they've looked at your house, they've documented what's there, and they, and they've done what they're supposed to do. They're also testing some fire hydrants periodically, they'll go around and open fire hydrants to see if there's actually water in them, because, for a couple of good reasons. So they're testing fire hydrants. They're also checking for alternate water sources, pools that they can get to, ponds or lakes that we can get to. The river's pretty far down, I don't think they get to the river, but, so they're looking for other water sources, and they're doing a lot of things, they're double checking addresses. They're checking roads and streets that we can't get to. Some of you live on property behind a locked gate, they're trying to make sure that they have the code to the gate in case they need to get in. Some of you live behind a gate on a long dirt road, they'll go back there and they'll check to see how far it is, and then they'll make a note of how far it is to get to the house back there. There may be four houses back there that aren't on the map, because our maps are not 100% accurate. So they're doing a lot of things, but the flagging does not mean it's a winner or a loser. Got it? Let's see, Marty Bentley is the other guy that has been here fairly recently, he's from the incident command team. I talked to him this morning, he had every intention of being here. Because he's not here, it simply tells me that there's something going on that needs his attention. It doesn't tell me that the fire's escaped, or that the fire's blown up, and that we're about to be overrun by fire. That's not what it tells me. It tells me there's something else going on that needs his attention. If it were yesterday, it could have been the government. That's how unrelated it could be to the fire. It could be that, it could be that he's in the middle of a planning session for tonight's night shift. It could be a number of things. So just because he's not here, we had this question a couple of days ago, just because he's not here is not an indication of his confidence level in the fire or his optimistic attitude about the fire, okay? Somebody will be back from them. And, oh, this, if you don't have this one, there's copies of this pamphlet in the back, it's called Ready, Set, Go. There's a few left, if you don't have it, go ahead and pick one up. This particular pamphlet, I liked a lot better. This one is, it's easier, it's quicker, it's shorter. I like this one a lot better. There are no more copies in the back. I'll try and have CalFire bring some up for tomorrow, this is a CalFire document, I'll try and have them get some for us for tomorrow. But in the meantime, you can go to, on the website, and it's downloadable, readyforwildfire.org. Ready for, all, no numbers, all letters, readyforwildfire.org. Yeah, there it is, on the bottom of that screen, on the bottom of that particular slide is the address where you can pick this up and download. With that, I'm going to ask Fred, if he would come up, Fred Wong, is the district ranger for the Ewok Ranger District of the St. Anaslos National Forest, and talk to us about what's going on there.
Yeah, so I just got back from a kind of a field briefing. I'm an Ewok Ranger District fire officer, and, you know, one thing he mentioned to me was to really emphasize that this is really a community effort as far as, when the fire, the service of the industry, they had private, within the forest. A lot of those, last time, there were 10 dozers working for Sierra Pacific Industries, and they helped us tremendously. And if it wasn't for Sierra Pacific Industries, SBI, I think we would be at a higher risk of the company. So if you guys ever see an SBI, just say, "We've been working hard for this." And, you know, with Steve Barron, who's our FFO, our partner and officer, he, you know, he works really closely. In this last fire, he was coordinating efforts between the SBI dozer and the Blue Team, that's fire along with CalFire. And so that's really how we kind of work together as a group. We lend our resources, our local knowledge, our St. Anaslos National Forest employees to the team as well as to other areas around the fire to really help try to, you know, try to tackle this problem. So that's something you should know, is that we do work together. And then also, the closure order. Now, the latest closure order is on the NCE web website, and I just, just want to emphasize that please respect this closure order, because, you know, people going in there, you know, sometimes you can hear on the radio, I've been in the war room down in the Grove, Groveland, we have kind of our law enforcement folks kind of working out of there. And, you know, when they get a call of somebody spotting someone going through the closure, they have to stop what they're doing, they have to stop their investigations, take time away from them, and go out and try to get those people out of there because it's unsafe. So I want to just ask you just to, you know, respect the closure order. I know it's really tempting to go, go to areas and look, and try to get bandage points at the fires, but what happens is, of course, you know, you really, you know, block the fire traffic, there's a lot of engine trucks going back and forth. But also, you could potentially be endangering the firefighters as well, because if the fire, the winds change, and they need to get to a safe area, and you just happen to be blocking, several vehicles blocking their escape route, and your escape route, things could really go wrong in that area. So just respect those closure areas, both for safety and just operational procedures. You know, check that NCE website frequently, because as the fire moves, the closure order boundaries may change, so just keep that in mind. And, you know, someone talked, someone was asking the incident team about rehab, and you know, as far as what I can say about restoration after the fire goes, well, actually during the fire, you know, there's going to be a lot of dozer, dozer lines along the landscape as contingency lines prevent the fire from going through. And so when the fire is contained, what they do is they go out there and start assessing, well, what needs to be done to those dozer lines? Do the water bars need to be put in there to prevent erosion? Do brush have to be piled up on there to kind of hide the scar on the landscape? Of course, we don't put brush on there until after the fire is out because we want those lines to hold, but it's after, you know, the containment is done. Now, from a kind of a further, further down the road picture, we have what's called the burned area emergency response. I think the last word is response. So that also, that comes also after the fire. You know, the rehab with the dozer lines and the suppression efforts come kind of like towards the later end of the fire, but the bear comes after the fire. That's for like immediate kind of prevention of, like primarily erosion, you know, they could be putting what are called wattles to prevent erosion from going into the streams, it could be receding, it could be a variety of things, and that's what a lot of the specialists do, kind of like when they're about 80% done with the fire, they start developing a plan to how to do the best rehab those areas that's, that's been burnt. So, so that's, anyway, all I have.
Vicki, did you think of anything to say?
Go on, Dawn. I have a few things.
Vicki Wright from the incident management team, you've been here since the beginning.
From the beginning. Don't laugh because of this pen, because when you work in a PIO shop, this is my favorite pen. I can see this pen across the room. Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to say thanks to all of you for being so gracious. You've been very kind to us, and we've pretty much taken over your towns. I can tell you that last week when I was in Groveland at their fire department, the firefighters were unbelievably gracious, and the people at Pine Mountain Lake, they were facing the same things that you're all facing right now. And we built a very close relationship with those folks, and when they lifted the order, I was so incredibly happy, lots of tears, lots of, lots of hugs, I feel like I live here now. It was great. But I wanted to just go over briefly a few of the things that are on your update, and don't look at my sheet, it's horrible, but this is normal for a PIO shop. The acreage burned, we update this twice a day. I've been getting calls in regards to, "Oh, I heard this on Twitter," or "Someone put this on Facebook." And seriously, go to NCWeb, because the information you see on NCWeb has to be approved by our IC. We are now a Type 1 routine, so because of the complexity of this fire and because of the dynamic behavior of this fire, you guys have the big guns here, so, you know, we don't want to see a wallow incident like we did in Arizona. Largest fire in Arizona's history, over half a million acres. So we want to nip this thing in the bud while we can. First of all, your area's burned, the acreage will be going up tomorrow. I do know that crews were successful in getting a dozer line around certain spot fires in the Duckwall Mountain area, so that was a big plus for them. I also had talked to Officer Wong here about the bear recovery, because I've been getting a lot of questions in regards to that. What is the long-term extent of what will happen to our forest? And I can tell you by experience, living on the Cleveland and the Ortega Fire of '89, I've never seen so many wildflowers come out that following spring. Because of the burn, it takes the heat to generate the seeds, and it was... And it was, even though I felt like I was living in a campfire area for a while, it was amazing to see the recovery. One of the things I also wanted to cover with you tonight was just the importance of containment. You've got, right now, you will have 4,000 firefighters that will be here in your area. And one of the things I did earlier today was I took a United States map with different areas and forests and rec areas, and I put on the top of it, hey, tell us where you're from. And I put some pins there. And I was surprised, within two hours in the Chow line, you have firefighters in your area from Maine all the way out to California and in between, all the way down to the California border to the south, and all the way up to the north of the Canadian border. You've got a real diverse group here. You've got hot shot groups from all around the country. I call them hot shots, the Navy SEALs, and they are. So, my whole. On the 209, this is something that we keep in house. I'm just going to briefly touch on this. As far as, you've got boots on the ground, I'd like to say, and eyes in the sky. At night, we have aerial surveillance going over here. Their job is to look for the hot spots. That's what they're doing. They're by plane, flying through your area in Tooluma City, I mean, coming from the Groveland area and seeing that. My first night in town, I drove in, I have flames on both sides, and I'm going, what have I done? And it was amazing because now our main concern is making sure we have ample structure protection for all of you. If you have any questions at all, I want to give you a phone number. It is for Tooluma Information Center, and I want you to call that number. That's what we're there for, and we're working for you. So keep that in mind. That number for you is 209-928-1059. And that's the info number. Someone will always answer that phone. There is no such thing with us as an answering machine. So what I'm going to do right now is just briefly go over some of the information from my 209, and then we'll save our questions for last.
Can you repeat the number?
Sure. Now, one of the things is that we have had a bit of an inversion layer. And one of the things about fire behavior is when that inversion layer lifts and the sun comes out, fire gets real active. And as he was talking about, when those winds come in from the southwest, that starts everything going all over again. Normally, fire lays down at night, but once the sun comes up, we're back in the ballgame. So all of you need to be very aware of just that type of behavior with fire. So when we were going through our 209 this morning at briefing, they were telling us that it had made a fairly significant run in the previous afternoon and had reached the southwest sides of the Hetch Petchy Reservoir. They said the fire would likely spread east of Cottonwood Meadow and Aspin Valley areas. Now, this is a projected incident movement. One of the things that we found was when I was out on 120 yesterday, I happened to be out there near Yosemite Lakes Market when we had a flare up. There was a media truck parked behind one of my buggies, I say my buggies, one of the buggies, the firefighters have no escape route. So it literally damaged the engine as we're trying to get everybody out. If there's something going on in your neighborhood, if the media are becoming a problem, that's what we're there for. You need to call us, and we'll take care of it. Okay? So I know this has been kind of a problem. I do apologize, but you're in the news. So one of the things that we realized was our direct line suppression efforts were impeded by difficult access, steep terrain, and conditions. Let's face it, we're in California. We've got a drought condition. So these things are the things that will hinder a firefighter's efforts. The thing is, is like I said, you've got hand crews, those crews are on the ground, and where they can't get into that terrain, we've got aerials. You have a DC-10. Do you realize that in your area, there are two DC-10s in the entire world? You have them both? So we're serious. So I want you, if you have any questions at all, please feel free to contact us. I want you to know that the firefighters are doing everything in their effort to provide you with the best protection that they can. And if there's anything at all that you need, please feel free to contact us. That's what we're there for. So thank you so much for having us. You've been very gracious.
A couple of things I want to cover. Weather forecasts. This question has come up at the fire station a couple of times today. If you listen to the news this morning, or the nationwide news, or the Sacramento news, or San Francisco, you hear about a, if you call it a tropical, some kind of, anyway, a bunch of moisture coming in. You need to understand that that weather forecast is very general, it's very generalized. It's put together for the public's consumption, and it's put together to sell market time on television and to sell ads in newspapers. Not that it's inaccurate, not that it's inaccurate, but it's very general. What these folks work with on this fire is what they call a spot weather forecast. A fire specialist meteorologist, a meteorologist, who's trained as a meteorologist and then specializes in fire weather and fire behavior, puts together, from a variety of sources, a forecast for this fire. And even this fire is too large for one spot weather forecast. They get two forecasts. They get one for the upper elevations and another one for the lower elevations. And they tell them at the upper elevations, your winds are predicted to be this, your humidity is predicted to be that, the temperatures are predicted to be this. They predict it, as I mentioned yesterday, they predict for today, tonight, tomorrow, and then a long term, over the next two days, the next four days, the next five days. That's what their long-term forecast is. So, yeah, there's pretty good news, is that we're going to get some moisture, and we're going to get some thunderclouds with a bunch of rain, and there's even some gully washer warnings for Fresno, I think Fresno County and some of the southern areas. I would be really, really, really surprised if we got one drop of rain on this fire. I would be very surprised. Because we're right at the northern end of that particular weather pattern that they're talking about. So I guess what I'm telling you is that looking at the weather's a good thing, but remember that the guys here work on a very specific, special forecast. Vicky, I wanted to ask you, the last number we had for fire information was an 805 number. Is the number you gave us, is it replacing that 805 number?
That's for Tooluma.
For those of us in Tooluma, is the number you just gave us? The 209 number? Okay. Everybody got that? And I think we'll probably get that up on a slide here, at least. I think we have that up on a slide now. Aren't these guys great? Inversion layer. I'll talk briefly about inversion layer. I'm glad you brought that up because I think it's a little bit interesting. An inversion layer is a temperature difference in the air that keeps the air from moving from down to up, or up to down. And what happens in a fire, what happens everywhere, but it's noticeable in fires, is in the evening, an inversion layer sets in between two ridges, and it traps the smoke in between the two ridges. And if you're up here in MEWOC and you drive down the hill to Sonora, sometimes as you drive down the hill, you can see that inversion, you can see that smoke. You're on top of the smoke looking down. And then when you get down into Sonora, you're in the smoke, you're in the immersion at that point in time. The other thing an inversion layer does is it traps the heat in, right? It traps the heat in underneath. And it reduces the oxygen available for us to breathe, and it reduces the oxygen available for the fire to burn. When the sun comes out in the morning, and it hits those slopes, and it hits the inversion layer, it heats the ground, and it heats the smoke particles in the air of the inversion layer, and it begins to expand. The air begins to expand and to rise because hot air rises, cold air falls. As it begins to rise, it goes up slopes, up canyons, up ridges. And when that happens, cold air rushes in from the Sacramento Valley below to fill it. And that cold air has lots of oxygen, and it's moving. The movement of air is otherwise known as wind. So as the inversion lifts in the mid-morning, and for the last four or four days, it's been lifting between 10 and 11 o'clock in the morning. As it lifts, two things, a couple of things happen. One thing is that the fire begins to pick up with intensity because it begins to get an inrush of nice fresh air with lots of oxygen, and it gets wind with it. The other thing that happens is that's when the aircraft can begin to fly because they can then start to see the ground. We aren't going to fly aircraft and drop on a fire if they can't see the ground that they're flying above. So inversion layer's a very interesting thing. Somebody came by the other station the other day and said, this is great, we can see this morning because it wasn't as much smoke. I said, well, that's not necessarily a good thing. We had smoke for three days in a row, and then no smoke. That tells me that it's probably been a little bit warmer overnight, and there's probably some wind moving that air around. Neither of those are very good for a fire. So just because we can breathe and see doesn't mean that it's going to make it easier to put the fire out. Well, let's see. I think I'm ready for questions and answers. Can we do it the same way as before? We'll, if you want to talk, if you have a question, raise your hand, we will get you a microphone, and then we'll go back and forth. And we'll find somebody to answer the question, hopefully somebody that knows something.
I had a couple of questions. Yesterday, Sierra Villas Choppings are flying constantly. Are they still around or they're in, I'm sure, a different area? And the line in Tweet B D that you pointed out with your laser, where is that in relation to MEWOC and Sugar Pine, et cetera?
Does anybody know anything specific about the helicopters, what they were doing yesterday, what they're doing today?
They're throwing water drops on the line.
Right. There, I think, yesterday, a couple of things, a couple of things with helicopters, they can't fly all day long on the same tank of fuel. So they have to fly someplace and get fuel. So frequently, you'll see them flying over, and they're headed to Columbia because they can fuel it there, or they're headed to some other location to fuel up maybe a 12-hour helitack base or someplace else. So just because they're flying over you doesn't mean that they're fighting fire. They may be going back for fuel. The other thing is, as I think Marty mentioned yesterday, and I don't know for sure what the helicopters were doing today, I haven't seen a lot of them today. Yeah. Yeah, and I think, I think they were working, they may have been working on the Duckwall. See, the problem is that you get, last time I counted, there were 15 aircraft on this fire, and I think it's probably double that by now. So you get fixed wing flying around, you get helicopters flying around, you can't have all in the same place at the same time. So they'll scatter around, and they'll say, okay, helicopters, you're going to work on this side of the fire. Well, you still can't have them going into the same pond and dipping out of the same pond because they'll either get tangled up, or they have to wait in line. Neither one of those are a good option. So they'll fly up to a variety. So typically, what happens is the air attack supervisor flying around, the guy doing donuts in the sky, remember that? He will say, okay, copter four, you're going to dip out of this pond and work that section of line to support this crew. Copter five, you're going to dip out of that pond. They will actually assign them different ponds to dip from. So you may see them flying aways to dip and then flying back to the fire. Flying aways to dip and fly back to the fire. Sometimes they'll, two or three copters will be able to dip out of the same pond, it depends on the distance and the timing and so forth. The line. Oh, where is MEWOC in relation to this? It's off of this map? Okay, here we are. Here's Division Delta. This is Charlie here, this is Delta. MEWOC's right here. We are right, we're right in there somewhere. So the distance is quite substantial, it's like, looks like about eight miles to me. One, two, three, four, five, six, maybe six miles from Division D as the crow flies. And if you lay that out, it's long.
For my students, do you know at the hottest spot of the fire what the temperature is and the velocity of the fire at its windiest part?
This fire? I do not. I know that normal combustibles burn at, this is a test question, normal combustibles burn at 540 degrees Fahrenheit. There'll be a test tomorrow. I don't know what the hottest spot of this fire is, and I don't know what the highest wind is on this fire. Do you have any idea what the highest winds have been since the fire started?
We had some 30 mile an hour gusts.
Yeah, some gusts up to...
Last week, we had gusts up to 44 miles an hour. That's where we had those giant headers that you could...
Last week, when I was in Groveland on Wednesday, I saw columns that were the biggest I've ever seen. You could see them actually in Fresno, and those were packing gusts up to 44 miles an hour.
I don't have today's IAP with me. I mentioned the IAP, the Incident Action Plan, it has the weather forecast, has a component of every division supervisor, every strike team leader gets a copy of it. But my recollection of this morning's IAP is that the weather forecast was for winds, the highest winds were, I think, eight to 13 with gusts to 25 was today's prediction. So the weather is better for us now than it was at the beginning when we had the big problems on Grove. The weather's not, the weather's more in our favor than it was then. We'd like it to be a lot more in our favor, but it's not quite there yet.
Around here, we kind of at least meet emotionally with this fire, kind of get used to status, okay, it's this smoky today, and it's about the same as what we've been dealing with. Today in particular, it was so much more smoky dense smoke. Can you talk to the difference of the smoke level from day to day? I heard, and then rumors start flying, oh, that's just from back burning. No, that's because something got away, and I've lost control, but, you know, all the rumors start flying. So that's my first question. And the second is, there's, yes, I do, because I've got the microphone. There's been a lot of confusion with the conversations that are going on with the officials that are going door to door right now, talking to people as far as the different levels of the evacuation advisory, what, warning, then order, is what we've been handed out, a slip that says those are the three levels. Lot of confusion of, I think the word warning is being used maybe erroneously because there's a lot of people who have, oh, we've gone from advisory to warning here in MEWOC. So can you speak to that?
Sure, but I mean, I wouldn't know what I was speaking about, so I'm going to let Scott talk about that first. I'll ask a question about the smoke. It's kind of a, it's a two-edged sword. Because when it's real smoky down on the ground like this, on the, what they call the surface, that means that there's no surface winds, there's no wind blowing the smoke away. That's a good thing because it's easier to put the fire out. But the problem is you've got to be in the smoke then to put the fire out. So it's a two, it's kind of a two-edged sword. A nice clear day on a wildfire is a dangerous thing because that means you've got wind, and wind moves fire. So how do you deal with it? It's tough. What causes the change?
Wind.
Yes. Yeah, it, well, if there's, if there's smoke here, it means that the air is moving from the fire to here. It isn't, it's not an indication of how fast the fire is moving, or how fa, I'm sorry. It means the air is moving from the fire to here. It's not an indication of how fast the air is moving. It simply means that there's not enough heat to move it up into the atmosphere, it's laying low, and then the air movement is moving laterally. And usually, it's a combination, don't go, let some go up and some of the lateral. So it's, when you are in advance, when you're in advance of a fire like this, we're out in front of the fire, right? We are. I mean, any way you look at it, the fire's down here, it's moving from bottom to top on this map. The fire's at the bottom or at the top. So we are in advance of the fire, that's where we are physically. Anytime you're in advance of the fire, you're going to get some smoke. And how much smoke you get is going to depend on a whole bunch of things. It could be from a back burn, it could be from another burn, it could be the fact that this time it's burning in a draw here, and that draw happens to go straight up to Salisbury Hill, and so they're getting a lot of smoke. It might mean that, and we wouldn't get that smoke perhaps. This is just an example of the reasons that you might go, might not get smoke. It might have to do with the terrain, the geography, in addition to just the movement of the air. It's, and it's pretty hard to predict. You want to talk about the... You want to talk about the, we warn you about an evacuation advisory. Therein lies some of the confusion with terms. Yeah, something confusing too is we're getting officers from all over the central valley and stuff like that. You are in an advisory. We are advising you to evacuate, okay? You're not getting a warning to evacuate at this point, okay? We're advising you now to evacuate. The next step we're going to take, should it become necessary, I'm not saying it's going to, should it become necessary, next we'll be in order to evacuate. If we go to an order to evacuate, that means you have to go now. Not get your stuff together, not hook up trailers, not do all the other things. It means it's serious enough where you have to go now.
Well, we received at our launch staff, a piece of paper that says advisory, personal, then warning, secondary, then order. But I won't ever do go write these.
Yeah, we don't really work in that area, warning, because it's just too complicated to do those, to do three. It just further confuses people. So if I just say, "We're advising you to evacuate, we're telling you to evacuate." Consider yourself warned. So let's do, it's, where's the next one?
Over here, Chief.
I got you.
Between those two.
We'll do, we'll do two more questions, and then we'll close off the general session. But those of us that can remain, we're going to remain until the last man standing. Go ahead.
Okay, so 10 days ago, if you'd have asked me what the evacuation protocols were, I would have gone, "What?" Well, now, I hear, when we first came here, there are three levels. The advisory, the warning, and the order to move out. So based on what I heard just a couple of seconds ago, the warning could happen, the order to move out can happen anytime now. Without the second step.
Scott, do you want to, did you hear the question?
No.
I'll let him ask it. Can you ask it, ask it over here? I think basically you had the same question. There's the three levels on your paper. That's what we work in. We work in more of a broad advisory. So it's just easier terminology. We're getting these outside experiences in, things like that. We're advising you, it's time to go. And next we'll go, we'll order, it's time to go. So basically, an advisory and a warning is basically the same thing, okay? We're going right from advisory to an order, okay? And should that become necessary. That's why we put our trigger points. And when I say this, is anything in the world could happen. We have trigger points, and this and that. We had a good line put in, PML, Unit 12. Fire got behind the line, we had to go pretty quickly to an order, okay? But Sheriff Bailey and the command staff have worked diligently to put what we call our decision points, those are decision points for us, and trigger points far enough out where if it gets there, we'll go to the board, okay? We're not going to wait, if at all possible, till the fire's at your doorstep, okay? We want to get you out before it's too smoky. We want to get you out where we have enough time for the whole population to leave. We want to get you out so that if there's any problems on the road, we have some leave time, okay? And believe me, they have worked tirelessly on putting these trigger points far enough out that if it hits those points, we were confident we could have a successful evacuation. We're not going to wait till the fire's at your doorstep. I want to, I'm going to add one thing to that, and that is, if you pack up your stuff in a trailer today or your car, and you go down to a motel or a trailer park, and you stay there, and it turns out the fire never gets here, that's a good thing. It's a no harm, no foul. But if the other thing occurs, you're going to come screaming at me, "How come you didn't tell me? How come you didn't tell me?" So my advice to you, based on, based on the length of this thing, is you're under an advisory, my advice to you is pack up and leave. If you're not willing to pack up and leave, pack up all your stuff. Like George Carlin says, "We all have this stuff, and what do we do? We get rid of it, we want to get more stuff." But pack up your stuff, take it somewhere. Come back to the house with a suitcase so that you can be gone in 10 minutes, even in the middle of the night. If you absolutely have to stay here, whatever you do, don't set yourself up so that it's going to take you an hour to get ready and walk out the door. Do not set yourself up for that.
You know, and there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of... I get the fact that it's confusing, because you do have warning, you have advisory, you have order, and then you have...
Warning.
No, not warning, but mandatory. But people don't hear that, they just hear evacuation. And so we've really tried to limit using, you know, the warning and all of those things. And we have lots of people that have special needs. We have lots of people that are bedridden, that need special help. And so if we can give that information out early, then we can prepare. And that's what we, you know, as the sheriff, we have to, we have to look very wide. And yes, the fire, as the chief said, six miles away. But am I, as the sheriff, willing to say, "We'll wait till it gets to three miles, because I don't want inconvenience a few people, because it may, you know, it may inconvenience them." Or they don't like the word evacuation, warning, or advisory, or whatever those things are. Just know that if we are in, we are in an advisory, if somebody comes, I shouldn't say "if somebody," if law enforcement comes that has a badge, that has a gun, that has a badge, that has police on it, that has sheriffs on it, that has a hat. We have probation people that are out there. We have lots of law enforcement out there. They are easily identified, just like the fire personnel. They, they look, they act, they talk, just like real cops, because they are. Also, Chief talked about the flagging. We ran out of a little bit of flagging last night, because in some other areas, and, you know, deputies are deputies, they're very resourceful, so they use crime scene tape. Not the greatest thing to do, but you know what? It worked, and so you're going to see maybe some crime scene tape out there. But, you know, I appreciate their, their, their resourcefulness of thinking ahead and trying to, you know, to... But anyways, as Chief said, you know, we want to save our homes, obviously, but we want to make sure that you're safe. Thanks.
Does Toolumi School have school tomorrow?
Closed all week. Are all the schools closed this week? All the schools are closed this week. That was the last question. But I want to go over some fire prevention stuff, and this is a test. We've been talking to you guys now since last Thursday, I think it was our first meeting. Let's talk about fire prevention. What kind of things do you want to make sure that you look out for around your house? Somebody raise your hand and tell me the things that you need to do. What do you need to do? Skip.
Yeah, you need to clear everything like propane tanks and everything away from your structure, so it doesn't blow up and cause a bigger problem.
Okay? If you have flammable vegetation around a propane tank, clear the flammable vegetation away. What do you use to clear it away with today? Not a gas-powered lawnmower, okay? Use a hoe. Or a McLeod, or a Polaski. What about needles on your roof, pine needles on your roof? Want to get them off? You going to use, you going to use a gas-powered blower? Okay. Now, funny thing, yesterday, I went down to the, the 6, the 11 o'clock briefing at the EOC. And when I get to Soulsbyville Road, or Soulsbyville Crossroads 108, guess what? There's a Caltrans mower out there with a flail mower on the side of the freeway. So I went into the EOC, and I went up to the Caltrans representative, because there's representatives from everybody there. Caltrans, county roads, the animal people, everybody. I went up to the Caltrans representative, and I whispered in his ear, I said, "You know, maybe you can do something about this guy down up there using the flail mower, because we're telling everybody, 'Don't do that.'" Can he wait a week? You know, just one week, just put him off a week. So I didn't see him today, I don't know what the story is. See him there again today? Well, I can't control Caltrans.
How about the electric blower on the roof?
The electric blower on the roof is okay. Electric blower is okay, because it probably won't start a fire, chances per se. Let's see, what other kinds of things? If you've got firewood stacked under your deck up against the house because you're getting ready for the snow, move it, stack it away somewhere else. Somebody asked me yesterday, "Okay, I raked up all of my needles, and I put them in a plastic bag, and now what do I do?" Don't put them in the baby jar. I suggest that you put them in your garage, and then when you leave, close the garage door. If the leaves burn up, your house, your garage is going to be burned first. But if you put that pile or bag of leaves in your yard, and a spark gets in it...